Hello, good evening, and it's time to call to order this regular meeting of the Sheridan City Council. Today is September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the time is seven P M. We are meeting at the Sheridan City Council chamber.
Recording in progress.
Okay, um, roll call please, Yvonne. Thompson, here.
Aicap, here. Buckles.
Here.
Mathleroy.
Here.
Heaver.
Here.
George.
Here.
Hodgins.
Councilor Hodgins is excused absent. Okay, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, now is the time that we can address additions or deletions, and the one thing I'd like to do is move an item. And I'd like to move, uh, item M one I, which is for discussion of the mobile shower and laundry unit. And the reason I want to do that is that people here want to comment on that, uh, the comment period follows, um, that report, so. Okay, so we will add that, um, right after C. See?
See.
But I thought I would start this council meeting, uh, by saying something we probably don't say often enough. And that is thank you to the members of our outstanding Sheridan City Council. As mayor, I have attended many meetings around Yamhill County and the state. I am always proud of our council and our city staff. So often I hear from other mayors that they must constantly contend with chaos and anger and disrespectful behavior among their council members. These mayors have described their frustration with wasted time, hard feelings, the disruption of good work and positive outcomes for their city. This has never happened with our current Sheridan council. So excellent job Sheridan voters for voting in a great council. I would like to recognize our city council members and thank them for all the great qualities they bring to the table. You guys know that councilors are paid seventy-five dollars a year. Uh, most of these funds, uh, they either return it to the city or donate it to a community cause. They don't even keep that seventy-five dollars. City council members do not have access to city, city funds of any kind. Counselors have no means of financial gain because of their positions on the council. And as a side note, as mayor, I get a hundred dollars a year, and yes, I return my check to the city as well. Every one of our councilors demonstrates their love of this community through honesty, integrity, and hours and hours of hard work to offer fair, impartial, and balanced representation of all Sheridan residents. They are committed and motivated to make Sheridan the best it can be for everyone while respecting state, city, and council rules. These councilors read and study the issues. They listen to each other, weigh out the pros and cons, and seek information from city staff, experts, and community members before deciding how their vote would best benefit the people of Sheridan. Our outstanding council has the common goal of doing right things for Sheridan. In addition, council members belong to other communities, or excuse me, committees and organizations such as Parks and Recreation, the Dog Park Group, our new art group, Sheridan Chamber Rotary, Sheridan Museum of History, Riverfront Parks Committee, school groups, Grand Shermanina Food Bank, Sheridan Revitalization Movement, and others. I was just thinking that we don't thank them enough for their selflessness and generosity. I believe we are getting an outstanding return for every one of our seventy-five dollar investments. Again, great job voters and great job Sheridan City Council. Yeah, you guys. All right, so, uh, let's then go ahead to the, um, actually, there's not a lot to say about the mobile shower unit. So what it is, is a, what we're trying to, what we're discussing is getting a, a unit that would contain showers, laundry, and toilets. And in like a movable trailer unit, um, uh, so that is, uh, so I've been kind of looking around to see what the options are. And so I called Jim Seber at Forest River and, uh, to see what he could tell us about that. And he said, they don't build anything like that, and he wasn't certain whether, um, Forest River across the country, if anyone of them does, but he didn't know who it would be, and he recommended that I call, uh, Bottom Equipment in McMinville, I think it is. So I did, and they said, we just don't have anything like that. So I found another company called Portable Restroom Trailers LLC, and I, uh, communicated with a representative there, explained what we were looking for, and then, uh, they said they would work up some quotes for us and, um, and get that back to me. But I checked before I left the house, and I still hadn't received anything back. So that's really all I have on, on that issue for now. Um, public comment period is coming. Did you fill out a form for the public comment? Well, you could do that now if you want.
Does anybody else plan on speaking?
I have several forms here, Heidi. And that will be our next, our next thing.
And did you, were you able to give Mayor the one term online?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay, so that's really all I have about those sheriffs, but if you guys have some suggestions or anything you'd like to add, please feel free to do that. This is the first public comment period. The public comment portion of the agenda is the opportunity for the council to listen to the public, but not for dialogue. The public is allowed up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city. The topic issued brought up may be referred by the council to the city manager for inclusion on a subsequent council agenda. Council has the discretion to ask questions after comments are concluded. Please note, complaints should first be addressed to the appropriate city department and/or city manager prior to, prior to addressing the council. So, but since you're here, let's talk. All right, so the first person I have is Loretta, is it Mark now? So you're up. Is, uh, there.
My name is Loretta Marco, and I live in Sheridan, Oregon. Um, I noticed that the news register had several items in the newspaper, some of them on the front page again, uh, mentioning about, uh, Encompass, and it did sound like they were pretty well tied in, but I don't think that that's been any, um, decision as they mentioned in the news register. Um, I did, I do think sometimes that, um, we wonder if there was any guidance that came with that two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars uh, regarding the shelter. Is it required to have a certain amount of beds? Again, it didn't get answered at the last meeting that I attended, uh, and it didn't say anything about laundry. I know we have a laundromat down in the center town. Um, I don't know that a lot of places have, uh, access to bathrooms and showers and laundromat altogether. Uh, but the issue, um, that was mentioned at one of the prior meetings was, is this truly a homeless issue? Or is it a drug addiction slash, um, intoxication, inebriation, mental health issue where people that have had some trauma in their life prior to laying out in the road or on the sidewalk or in the woods or in a camp, um, that they had, and that's why they can't keep a job? That's why they dropped out of school? That's why they lost their parents, lost their, I mean, if there were rules in the house, like you have to stay sober, you're not allowed to stay in my house, et cetera? That's what I'm thinking. Um, the other thing that I looked up on Under Measure One Ten was, uh, Yamhill County has only one B H R N, a Behavioral Health Resource Network. I put in this whole thing into the Yamhill community thing, uh, online, it's a, a Facebook group. Um, Oregon Health Authority approved seven service entity details. Um, it's everything from screening and comprehensive behavioral health needs to individual intervention, low barrier substance use, peer support, housing services, harm reduction, and supported employment. Seven issues that they have been paid. Seven agencies got over seven million dollars in two thousand and twenty-two, seven agencies. One of them is Encompass, and it only covered one of the seven entities, and that was peer support mentor. If many of us feel that drug addiction and homelessness is related, or if, um, not disturbing people because the state doesn't want us to disturb people that are houseless, that we don't even know if they're residents or not, that came up at one of the meetings. Um, how does one pick an entity or a group that only takes one of the seven, ticks one of the seven boxes that's getting paid seven million dollars to split? So the other ones that were a better choice perhaps might have been Yamhill Community Action Partnership. They cover housing, and then someone else mentioned Provoking Hope, but in two thousand and twenty-two, they were not listed on that metric. That's all I had was the metric. Um, and the other one was Yamhill County Health and Human Services. They cover all six except for harm reduction. That sounds good, intervention, comprehensive behavioral health screening, substance use treatment, everything a little. So, um, I'm more concerned about the drug addiction, uh, health issues in the town versus houselessness as a symptom, so.
We did, uh, kind of go over some of the services that you're talking about that are offered, and I, I'm sure that we will discuss them again. Thank you very much.
Do you think it's appropriate now to address the news register article?
Yes, Heidi, would you like to do that?
Yeah. So it's come to my attention, we have, it's come to my attention that there, the news register posted some, that's a, there's one. That the news register, um, had an article that was on the front page of their latest, uh, issue, issue, printing. And, um, it is, it is unfortunately incorrect information. So there has not been any contract, uh, or any, uh, relationship established with Yamhill, with Encompass Yamhill Valley at this point, so.
By who?
By the city.
By the city.
By the council. The city, the council.
By Sherwin?
Yes. Correct. This is not accurate, so that's unfortunate that that was done. Um, any of the decisions, the last decision was for the, the council requested me to, to go to or work with Encompass Yamhill Valley to see if they would be interested in guiding us with a task force to start there at a very high level group as they proposed, and that has not happened.
That was your suggestion, I was at the meeting. I don't know if I can comment that, but.
You can.
You can't.
Okay.
It's against the, um.
Are they saying that there's no shelter that's going to be built?
Excuse me. Did you sign up for the public comment period?
I just signed her, Marianne, but I can.
You should, if you want to speak, that's, that's the way to do it. I'll get you on. That's yours.
There you go.
Thank you.
You want three times. Okay, so, I don't know where I'm going with this.
So, yeah, so basically.
Unfortunately, this information in here, we have not established a relationship with Yamhill or Encompass Yamhill Valley. That's the information that I'm trying to share, that's it.
Okay. And you know, I can see where that could be upsetting to the public as a whole, because you read it in the paper like that, and you would assume that that had happened, and it truly happened. What it takes to, the, the council must vote to, before a decision is final. And so far, on any of these issues, the council has not voted on any of these issues. But Jim?
I don't want to take up speaker's time, but I think what needs to be said is the city of Sheridan council is looking at all of our options. We have made no agreements or signed contracts with anyone. We love hearing things like our first speaker mentioned that, uh, some of the services are available. We are working with them, by the way, but I get really irritated when someone tells me they read online, and I won't say where, that we're lying, that we're trying to sneak something into Sheridan. I get very upset about that. I moved back this time because I love this town, and I sure as hell don't want a bunch of R Vs and cars sitting around, which is another rumor I heard. We have done nothing, we are searching for the best options we can have. And if you would please spread the word, there's nothing been signed. We are still looking, which is why there's nothing on the agenda tonight that we're trying to cover, because we're still trying to coordinate.
Jim, in the package, it says, like, eighteen property.
You're out of order.
Not a border, you guys have this in the packet for the end of the meeting, I'm predicting this is what you're doing to the people. Jim?
It's not a time for public comment. If you don't stop speaking out of turn, you will be removed from this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Rick Marknow.
My, uh, I, I think it's more of a complaint, and maybe I should have taken it up a third. It's about the speed limit on West Main Street.
Nope, we're here for that too.
It's like Sherwin Raceway out there.
On which street?
West Main.
West Main.
It's a, it's a street that goes through the city.
Yes, I know, yeah, I mean, so you're talking about once you go in your, that part of the line?
When people, log trucks or anybody, they come around the corner, before you get to the road tracks, it says forty-five miles an hour in the city, whether they're doing sixty and more, and I don't know why the log trucks are so noisy when the chip, the chip trucks are quiet. And they all use their jig brakes, we don't have a jig brake thing to stop that. I'd ask, uh, two different county sheriffs to sit out there with their cars, and they don't. The wife and I stopped the guy that was putting out a, uh, speed limit deal.
Oh, yeah.
Other end of East Main. Ask him to come down and put it on West Main, nothing. And that's, that's all I got to say is that something needs to be done about it. The people from the rest home, they're getting ran over or a little ran over out there.
Okay. There's not much shoulder on the road, or is there?
There's none over. So that's all I got to say is that.
Thank you.
We need to address that.
All right.
Okay, I'd like to see some information on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ginger O'Leary.
I'm fine, thank you.
I'm sorry, you know, does it have a decline?
Yes, it's fine.
All right. That was Ginger, and then I have, uh, Julie O'Leary?
Yes.
Did, what was that person's name?
Julie.
Julie O'Leary.
I'm Julie O'Leary.
Thank you.
Uh, so I've been a Sheridan resident for quite a few years now, I'm very young. Um, and I haven't been to a lot of city council meetings, and then I've heard through grapevine some changes that were trying to be made. I know you guys have said that nothing has been set in stone yet. I just wanted to give you guys a food for thought on some of the things that I've seen when I lived in Portland. Is not just the economic impact of getting that first set of money to try and make something work for whatever kind of, um, you know, people in need type situation that you're going to have. Um, but not just that, but the risk that is associated with that as a small community, we have a lot of other small communities that surround us. What that's going to bring here would not just be more readily available transportation, but also with people who have prior convictions, um, especially violent crimes of sorts. And also the upkeep of those can be very traumatic for a community. Um, if we think an RV on the side of the road is an eyesore, if we have an unsupervised area, especially something near residential areas, uh, what kind of environment that's going to bring for everybody. Um, so that's just what I wanted to say on that topic, but also I wanted to bring up, um, what you were saying about public safety. And also, I was curious as to why we paved or we didn't pave. We rocked and tarred Cherry Hill, and I had no idea this was going to happen, I live near there or on there. Um, and our road was seemingly fine, it had fog lines, it had a small bump in it, but no potholes. Um, but there are sufferings here in this town you can't even drive on, going twenty-five, the speed limit. And then you also have other areas of town like Maine and Cherry Hill that I've seen kids, kids, almost getting hit by cars going fifty-five. Fifty-five on Cherry Hill, right after you pass the last residential crossroad, going fifty-five and running their engines. So I have seen kids get pulled off the shoulders, there's one sidewalk on that road, and even then, you don't feel safe. And I know we think the rock might have been a great idea, but think about those, uh, cars going fifty-five on the shoulder that wasn't tarred down. We're getting rock chips in our vehicles, we're getting our houses hit with rocks. I, I mean, it's just, I was concerned, and I wondered why we did that when we have roads that we can't drive on. Um, so that's all I have.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I think I had a really good short thing, that's a county road.
Oh, yeah.
That's not a city maintained road, Cherry Hill.
Well, that's even worse, that means we haven't done anything else.
Yeah, that can, all right, thank you, Julie. Okay, we have Samantha Crabtree.
All right, so, I'm pretty new to Sheridan, uh, born and raised in McMinville. Um, we, my husband and I did not intend on coming to Sheridan, but we did not like the way that McMinville has turned. Um, bringing in certain resources and habitats for certain situations. Um, so we made the choice to move our family to this, uh, small town where I think everyone kind of looked after each other, but not enabled each other. Um, and I think that we have gone kind of far left on how I, how my safety for my children, um, and my family. And I've seen a huge decline in that, and I'm, and I'm just fearful of what I've been reading and what I've been seeing, and that's why I want to come to a council meeting to maybe get some clarification and hope that, um, a portable laundromat and restroom and shower is maybe not the climate that I'm looking for for raising my family, um, due to, you know, I pay my taxes, and I pay for my house that has its own shower and everything, and yes, I'm fortunate for that, but I work so hard to pay those taxes. Um, and I work so hard to provide that. So I just want to bring that food for thought to saying, you know, I work really hard. And I believe that it's everyone's choice to work really hard to getting those, uh, things in life. Um, that was, that's really my concern or comment on this, that I, I want to get some clarity on it.
May I ask a question, so you, you know, um, are there certain areas or things that are making you, um, uh, concerned for your children's safety?
Yes, so, um, we walk a lot down Bridge Street into Maine almost every day to get, like, an ice cream for the kids. Um, and I've seen more drug activity.
On the streets, yeah?
On the street, on the sidewalk.
Okay, is that, is it like by the plaza or further down, or?
It's a lot by the churches.
By the churches, okay.
And, you know, um, one church in particular fixed the problem. There was a continuous person that would sit there and harass my children and I every time we walked by every day. And that's actually what drove us out of McMinville, because we would go for family walks, and we would get harassed by the people on the side of the road who were enabled those luxury's of going, well, we don't have to do anything but do what we do. Um, and that's just, that's just my concern and my two cents on it.
Well, thank you for coming to talk to me.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Uh, yes.
Uh, did you say one church seems to have solved the problem?
Yes.
Okay, which church was that?
Um.
Talking about the big red brick one?
The one that's on the left side over here. I called them three years ago, and they, they kicked the person off their property that slept there. And I was very appreciative because they took my concern seriously.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Next up is Joe Neely.
Hi, I'm Joe, um, I want to make sure that some of the council members are aware that I spoke to the American Legion representatives there of, of, of homeless count, of what they're thinking is approximation, they're looking about thirty.
Uh, could you tell me who that was she spoke to?
Uh, Bobby.
Okay.
Um, who does sack lunches, uh, kits, um, who also speaks to the, um, the food bank representatives there, they cooperate together. Um, she even pays tab for some clothing for, um, women and children.
Yes.
So there, she would comfortably say about thirty. Um, there's also a gentleman who I speak to who some would consider doesn't have a permanent residence. Um, he says about thirty. Um, I did also talk to Bobby about, um, what she feels about the community. She doesn't believe that a lot of it is drug use, a lot of this people down through the hard times. They don't have family that they can go to, to live with, get back on their feet, so they're just trying to get through life. Um, I also mentioned, uh, like last year, um, that, uh, when I was doing some video and some pictures on the night, I noticed that, that crosswalk where Benny Hueys is and Andrew Bargans is. Um, I was a strong proponent for having sort of pedestrian signal there, but then I had some complications which some people in the city are aware of, which was more of a priority, and that was not even on my mind at that point. Um, I would like to see some sort of progress going towards that. So Kai, um, who does public utilities, does investigating on speed limits, and he did mention that vehicles are getting bigger, heavier, faster, um, which can be more traumatic to the human body, especially children when they get off, um, go home. Um, and there are vehicles that are pretty high, like vans and trucks, that, um, you can't see a kid when they're crossing the street. Um, and obviously, no one has real control over that because it's a vehicle, right? Um, and we are looking into spacing of how far it needs to be from the crosswalk when it comes to how fast the vehicle's going, the speed limit. Um, but I think, um, maybe sometime in the future that having some sort of signal might be good and beneficial for people, especially when kids go off to school and at the crossover to the other side and things like that. So, any questions?
No, but we thank you for sharing that.
Thanks very much.
Actually, we had discussed at a meeting about that mainly because parking is so scarce downtown, and we can't take advantage of select parking lot, because they're actually open to the public, but they could close it off to the public if we keep using their parking lot to visit other buildings, was to maybe just have compact parking only, which means only a small vehicle could park there, which you should be able to see over the top, a small vehicle, or if it was a van or a truck, and then that way the parking is still be available to the business. Just wanted to let you know that we did this movie, didn't we?
And also, when you're coming in, um, South Bridge going towards the bridge, there is that blind spot because of how the road kind of goes like that, it's not perfectly perpendicular, because it kind of goes like a, like a, like a triangle kind of, and it makes it hard to see even around that corner there where the Benny Hueys building is, because the road kind of does that, and it kind of corrects itself going towards the bridge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, um, please forgive me if I pronounced this wrong, uh, I think it's Deirdre Aaron?
Deirdre.
Deirdre Aaron.
I've done that all my life, don't worry. This is my first time here.
Oh, welcome.
I have been a resident since nineteen seventy-six. But for a short time, came back. I might become a pain in the ass. I voted for all of you, I just need to know that everybody got in that I wanted in, all right? And I, I'm not, I believe in doing my job. All of us have touched on my concern. Just to let you guys know who I am, my son was the man that lived at the end of Main Street. His camp burned down. Um, somebody set fire to his camp to get him out of there. Luckily, he wasn't there when that happened, and he wasn't, he was attacked, but that was the result. Anyways, he now lives in my backyard, because the rule in my house is if you're using, you ain't coming in my house. Uses the bathroom, does his laundry, except sleeping bags, he has to go to the laundromat for that, and he uses my shower three times a week. But that isn't what I came up here to talk about. But I think everybody needs to know who we are and what our motives are, what our motivations are. The city has concrete. The city has concrete bathrooms in that park. I live by the park, by the way. They worked the first two years that they were constructed. From that point on, and my kids have grown up and all of my daughters, my two daughters and all of their girlfriends always knew that they could come to my house to use my bathroom because those things never worked. They got shut down, never operated after that. Nobody wants the city to put something permanent. But you have to face what we've got. We have people that need to take showers. We have people that need to use bathrooms. And the poor hotties during the, the baseball season don't suffice for the winter. Nobody wants it in our backyard, but I've got it. And the city gave me a citation because you could see his thing. So we put up a very expensive fence. And I think that J and M Homes is contact that you could consider, Mayor.
Okay.
Because they build from the axle up and they, and they build tiny homes. They have whole, and they could make bathrooms that are utilized, that are portable. And they would know how to do it. Forest River, I thought was a great brainstorm. But that's what I was trying to raise my hand about because I think J and M Homes might have a solution because they are big.
I'm sorry, we cheered buzzer went off.
Way off, I know.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that.
So we have one more, but she must wait until the final for the comment period, so I'll just let that guy turn. Remember it? It is now time to approve the city council meeting from August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Do I hear a motion?
I approve the city council meeting for August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Second.
You? Any discussion? All in favor? Let me see, are you in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Sorry, I talked to the stone.
Thank you, that's unanimous. Our next vote will be the voucher directory for invoices paid from August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three through September eighteen, twenty twenty-three. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion if you're in favor.
Thank you, a second. Thank you. Any discussion on this? Yes, Jim?
I always take a thorough look at what we're spending. I had a lot of questions I came in today. Talked with the city finance person and city manager. And I could not find anything that was odd or unreasonable. So it was just an open and shut that didn't work. But there's no problem whatsoever.
We appreciate you looking at that so closely and getting those questions answered. Thank you, Jim. Lexi?
Mine is in the reports later on. I'm sorry, it looks the same as in the.
Okay, thank you. So all in favor?
Unanimous.
And now it's time for our reports. Let's see, I see Lynn is here. Does she have anything in addition to her information of the pack? She does not, okay. So I am thinking that there's probably nothing to add there. Tyler, do you have anything to add?
We've been very busy.
You want to elaborate on this?
There's just lots going on, lots of development, lots of employment questions, lots of Stella Jones meetings.
Yes. Thank you. Did you have something else?
I did. And I had a question for Heidi and I'm sorry I didn't ask you before now. Page five of six.
Five, which page?
Page five of six. On the council packet of forty-five, under the bottom of the page. And maybe this is old and I haven't seen it before. But what's the difference? I know what contingency is. But what's the difference in that and an unappropriated fund balance?
Yeah, unappropriated fund balances allow a city to tap into those, that money in the sense that that is the goal of every working, well-working municipality should be able to carry three months of its own until it gets three months out from the start of the fiscal year. Because technically, if things were to stop in motion, you, like, we didn't collect property taxes until November. So you really want to be able to have the health of an agency be able to make it those three months. And that also allows you enough revenue to meet all of your demand. So the three months is kind of the critical thing. So that's what unappropriated is. It's that money is held aside for the city to go forward.
And none of that is included in the beginning balance?
That comes from the beginning of the balance.
Yeah.
As a revenue and then this is put into the expenses. This is under the other requirements. So the danger, of course, is that if something catastrophic was to happen and you needed that money right away, you can't get into it. But if you, I guess semi catastrophic. But if you, on the other hand, if something catastrophic happened and you didn't have that money for your future fiscal years, that would be dangerous too. But that's a good measurement of the health of an organization. Is that unappropriated and the contingency?
Yeah, thank you for that foundation.
Oh. Yes.
Okay, and this is.
Well, when it comes to the public works, because I know that we're at libraries, so I just wanted to say for the young lady about the streets. It says in the public works report under streets that we have been filling potholes in the city, focusing on the most severe ones first. Customer complaints are also a priority. So if you see something that you think needs to be repaired, the public works department is where you would call and address the street location, possibly the house number that had a pothole in front of it. Because they can't just drive around town. It takes, you know, us as a community, you as a community, us together to locate where those complaints are and then they can drive by there and address them. If they are doing them, evidently just not in an area that you're noticing. So maybe you could call there and then get it addressed.
Thank you. Okay. So the next one is, good news. So we address the ordinance twenty twenty-three zero four and ordinance amending chapter.
Here, I did have an item under five code enforcement and safety report. Deishan would like me, Council Buckles, when he came in, asked for an update. So the one on Olive Street has been closed out today. We met there, we met the criteria for closeout. And then the other one on this list, I found out that the next inspection is technically the morning after this closes. Because she gives somebody on nine eighteen, you know, the hole, like if they got off work and they come in. Yeah, so then she goes out on nine nineteen. And so she offered that if you would like, she is happy to write an email out tomorrow morning or tomorrow afternoon when she gets done with it to follow up. So, and I'll work on that, yeah, okay? Just if you're curious. But a lot of these, too, you know, they're, they're kind of taken in, in accomplishments, let's see. Like steps, right? So if you meet this criteria and then she carries it forward, you know, you keep like having stepping stones for achievement. So, yeah.
It can be overwhelming if you try to tackle everything at once.
Yes, exactly.
Things reach a certain point.
Yes, but she didn't have a, a car back. We had lost our car and our truck for quite a long time. So she does want me to let everybody know that as of Thursday this last week, she has thirty-one new open cases now that she's managing.
Good for you.
Very good. We got that truck for six thousand dollars.
On the code enforcement report, the final, does that mean they've done through all the steps and they're now at the final?
Yes, that's the final.
Now expectation or whatever else will happen at this point? Because I see there's more than one on that.
Yeah, that's the end of the road. The next step would be the citation.
All right.
We are also working very, very hard too, by the way. We do have an RV that is on Buffalo Street, which I'm sure a lot of people have seen. And it is abandoned. And we are working with police and tow and the tow companies to figure out what we're gonna, what we can do. Because as people may or may not know, tow companies largely have stopped towing. Well, they will tow them, but they won't house them.
They won't be on their property.
And the dismantlers are also very difficult and very expensive. It can be around five thousand dollars per RV.
That's a very expensive problem.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, let's go on with to ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero four and ordinance amending chapters, Jim?
Well, there's no written report. Do you have anything to report, finally?
Yeah, Mayor Mary asked. I already, I answered.
I missed that, sorry.
It was, it was very brief.
Okay, one more, huh? Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash four and ordinance amending chapters thirteen dot twelve dot two sixty of the municipal code relating to sewer user charges. So the good news here is there's not going to be a rate increase. The way this is determined.
For water.
For water. This is determined by a third party, Donovan Enterprises, and they look over our situation and they make recommendations. And so they recommended no rates this year. So that's the way that worked out. So do I hear a motion to accept this ordinance?
I make a motion to reduce ordinance twenty twenty-three dash four and ordinance amending chapters thirteen point twelve point two six zero or thirteen point twelve point five zero of the shared municipal code relating to sewer user charges. First reading by Tyler Lemon. It's my voice?
I don't know.
Just all in favor?
All in favor.
That's unanimous, thank you.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero four and ordinance amending chapters thirteen point twelve point two six zero of the municipal code relating to sewer user charges.
Make a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash four.
Second.
Discussion? Go call?
Yes. Aka?
Yes.
Buckles?
Aye.
McElroy?
Yes.
George?
Aye.
Hebert?
Aye.
I make a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh four for the second time by Tyler Lemon.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero four and ordinance amending chapter twelve point thirteen point twelve point two six zero of the municipal code relating to sewer user charges.
Make a motion, we accept the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash four.
Is that okay?
Thank you.
All, all in favor?
Aka?
Yes.
Buckles?
Aye.
McElroy?
Yes.
Hebert? George?
Aye.
Okay, is Nicole Pugh here today?
No, she's not. Should we appoint her in her absence? Okay, she's important to the other part. She's highlighted. She might have told me that she couldn't make this meeting. I couldn't have stayed here.
Okay, so the Parks and Recreation Committee met on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and they voted unanimously to recommend Nicole Pugh from the non-voting position to the voting position. Let's see, she was appointed to, to her position on May fifteen, twenty twenty-three and has gained the appreciation from her fellow committee members, which makes them comfortable to make the recommendation to the mayor. If the confirmation is approved, the Parks and Rec has directed the staff to open up applications and to recommend for the non-voting position. They would like staff to constipate on finding a shared immunity. So I would like to appoint Nicole Pugh to the voting position on the Parks and Recreation Committee. Does the council have any objections? Thank you. Okay. That's that. Thank you, Nicole, if you're listening. We appreciate your work. Okay, so now it is time for our city manager.
Councillors, you have my report in your packet. It's several pages. As you can see, Mary, I've been working on a new format, or Mayor, sorry, been working on a new format. So I think, does anybody have anything you want to add to the regular reporting items section? Yes?
I don't have anything to add. I have a question about the reporting report.
Yep, if nobody has, does anybody have any of the other? So the top area will be the regular reporting items. If nobody has any other thing to add to that. And then the second piece will be the grant updates. But just to be clear, the financial part will still be a part of Yvonne's report since she tracks the money part of that. And then the third part is my, my ramblings of other reporting items. So that'll be the, the new layout for the report to keep us all on the same page updated. Yeah, okay. So if nobody has any things to add to that, those first areas? Yes, I'm happy to accept questions at this point.
All right, questions for the city manager.
Not on the regular reported items, but on another.
Yes.
Part.
Okay.
My question was, is it worth for Yanhill Street?
Yes.
Why is Keller the engineer for this project?
Keller has been the project, the engineer for this project since before I came about. We had considered changing the guard with our new Civil West, but there is quite a bit that would happen on the other end of that as far as grant management and working with the federal government to make that change. And we think that, so all the Keller's work will be reviewed by Civil West. So it's actually works out for the best because you'll have two firms reviewing.
I wondered this, but, you know, I knew we had hired a new engineering firm. And when I saw Keller on here, I wanted to know.
How that works.
Yeah, how we were gonna work, hopefully, work together on this. But I know they know more about this project and they had good start to the project, so.
Yeah, they were awarded a contract by the council well before I came.
And that has not concluded, obviously.
No, you won't be done with that engineering report. We just had a meeting last like Thursday or Thursday, Wednesday. And there was an onsite inspection for storm and all kinds of stuff. We have a new stormwater person that they brought on through that process. But it will take at least a year to have the engineering report done because it is a huge project. And luckily, we did secure that grant money of one point four million dollars for the engineering. If the, the study comes out that construction is needed, then that will, the city council will have to decide how they're gonna finance that. What we do not know what that looks like at this point is that you're at least ten months away from having any sort of choices to make. And then your choices will be the ending part of the engineering report. And so that'll take, you know, a couple of months for them to put together and then it'll finalize. That's what the ten months will be.
Long as they're working well together.
Everybody, yes, so, yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
And city staff is a big part of that project.
And Heidi, would you remind us of the goal setting dates and times?
Yes, I will. So the goal setting for the city council is, has stated it is Tuesday, October tenth, and Friday, the thirteenth, at ten AM to two PM. And so that's for the city council to set their goals. That will be led by the council of governments.
And it's on your calendar.
On your calendar, but Yvonne puts together, thank you, Yvonne. And then we also will have, yes, that will work. They will be contacting each of you either by phone or, I think it's by phone. They're not gonna do in-person for this first part, but you may even do Zoom with them. And they're just gonna pick your brains individually and then try to come together with some likeness. And then we'll all come together and look at.
Yeah, there's a question, Heidi, about how, contact, I see, but I just said it, I missed it. They get a, like, email or text or call?
Yeah, they asked us for your email and your phone number. So, yeah, be sure you're checking your city email.
Yeah, I bet.
Any other questions for me?
Did you say something about DEI training?
Yes, thank you, Jim. So we will have a DEI training which, for the council, and then the following day is for, the following day is for the staff. So that is on, it is tentatively set, and CIS teaches it with Sharon Harris. I've taken it before with her. She's a very, a very good trainer. It is set for 6 o'clock on Tuesday, October 3rd. So that date might be difficult because we do have a work session the night before. So we'll work on a.
6:00 AM.
6:00 PM.
You give, Jim, a hard if that.
I would miss that.
6:00 PM on that, on Tuesday, October 3rd. It is a really, it is a really good training and it, she'd like to have about two hours.
Oh, okay. Okay, I don't have my acronym list with me today. And I turn out the only one that doesn't remember what DEI stands.
Sorry, I thought I said that part. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion.
Okay, any, anything else, Amy?
No.
I'm gonna go ahead and.
Oh, I guess I do have one thing. When Counselor Buckles was reading my report, when it says SCI Partner Tour, there was, I just wanted to be sure he read it differently than I intended it. So we, the partnership is that it was four-ish people that came from the prison, from the community, from their community group, and their correctional support team leader. And we visited six locations. We visited, just so that they had a better understanding, the, the prison, of how we work in all of our different places and how they can maybe assist. So they went to the American Legion. Well, first they were at City Hall, and then we went to the school district, then we went to the library, Public Works, we went to the food bank, we went to the American Legion.
Fire Hall.
And the fire hall, that's our, and we went to the fire hall. And they were very fruitful conversations.
Yes.
And very positive. It was a good opportunity for everybody to get introduced.
Yeah, we found a lot to, and several instances where FCI found ways that they could help these different organizations and that these organizations felt that maybe they could also offer some help. For example, Denver would maybe some educational opportunities and things like that. So it was well worthwhile, I thought. So I, I was going to give everyone an update, and one of the things we probably get asked about more than anything else is the, what's happening at the Hyder Building.
Work.
Okay, we'll talk about that right after this. All right. Okay, it is now time for the second public comment period. The same rules apply to this comment period as the first. And I only have one slip for that.
Is it online or should I get set back?
Um, I believe, yes, it's online. And the person wishing to speak is Cindy Sample. Cindy, are you there?
Let's scroll down a little bit because there's a long list. Make sure nobody's.
Has she, did she write anything on there so you can read it?
It says, I would like to speak during the public comment. Let's see, I would like to speak after, after the meeting unless someone else has covered my concerns. Thank you. And that's all it says. So I'm not sure. Maybe someone did cover her concerns. I'm not sure.
I don't know. Cindy, are you online?
There's quite a few that don't have names.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm sorry. I didn't know I had to unmute it. And so I didn't know if you were gonna unmute me or what was going on. Anyway, no, I just think you've pretty much covered everything I was concerned with. The mayor addressed what's going on with the courtable unit, and then the citizens of both addressed the concerns I still have. So I have nothing to say.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so now.
Now do I mute it back?
I can take care of that for you.
You're good. Okay. So as I was saying, you know, the Hyder Building is probably something that the council gets asked about more than any other project around town because it's right in the center of town. So Heidi and Laura Conroy, who is our planning director, she's taking over for Jim Jackson for planning, and she does other things, too. So the three of us walked over and took a look and talked to the owner. And here's what he said. So he said steel support beams supported by eight by 10 concrete pillars underneath are installed. So he said that's done. New supports have removed 70% of the load from the original structure. The structure is now supported inside rather than outside. The original front will now serve as a facade only. Three of the four commercial spaces will each have one office and one bathroom. The coffee shop layout will be different. The southernmost commercial unit is at a stage for installing services, but that will be done when the rest of the building is ready. The crew has been working on staircases this last week, including an egress stairway for the, for second floor living spaces. So, let's see, if that makes sense. They've been jacking up the interior supports as needed, adding additional support and rebuilding walls and other supports. Underground work includes replacing joists and jacking things up gradually. He explained that one wall is sunk like a foot, but you, you could only lift it up like an inch or two at a time, so, to, until they get it level. One handicap accessible studio unit at the back of the building is taking shape and will include a kitchenette and a bathroom. Let's see. He said they should be working on the storefronts within the next 30 to 60 days. He said he expects PGE to come and do their work in January. He does not expect to have occupancy permits until early summer. He said like June or July. So, there you go. Probably heard about that. Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure everybody knows it by name, the Hyder Building.
Oh, okay.
There's a one with no friends.
Yeah.
Down the town.
Yeah. Obvious good expression.
Looks right to the back wall.
And, so one thing I did is, I just want to pass this around to the council tonight because I'd like us to have this information at our workshop. So, one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was that maybe people don't realize all the services that are currently offered to the people of Sheridan who need them. And there's, you know, like I pointed out, although there's quite a population difference, Sheridan is the third largest city in Yanhill County, and county services, the people of Sheridan are, you know, just as entitled to those services as anyone else. So, one way to find out about these services is to dial a 211. So at that meeting, people thought, well, maybe people don't know that. Maybe they don't know how to get over these services. And, or that. The other thing is, is that there is free transportation to, where most of the services are in McMinnville. We have a food bank here and like that, but, so you would need transportation probably to get there. And there is free bus transportation to these services in McMinnville. So, so in an effort to make sure people do know that, we're putting this flyer out, but I want to pass this around to the council so that if, feel free to write on it and make any changes you'd like so that we can get it as, you know, accurate the way the council wants it before we print those off, so that we don't pass out something that's incorrect. Okay, so that's that. And so Lucy, are you ready with the council's public art report?
What about the dog park?
Those, are you gonna do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so Counselor Hodges, this is her report on the dog parks. She said the city park proposal, so at the Sheridan City Park for Yanhill, she has sent a proposal to the Parks and Recreation Committee to take down the old horseshoe pit area and implement a temporary dog park in its place. I think it's actually expanding the horseshoe area that's there now. The Parks and Recreation Committee approved this proposal. Jefferson Street Park, so that's the one that's behind the baseball field at the high school. We're waiting on an update from Public Works. Public Works has been leveling ground, yet work's stalled due to more pressing city water issues because we had a pretty good size break, which I'm sure you read about in your packet. Jefferson Park has all materials in inventory to complete once ground is level and fenced enough. At that point, the project will be completed in three phases. At the south side park, the south side park, the dog park over there, they're meeting on, whoop, this is a little old, on 9/15/23 to measure a proposed dog park perimeter. And I know they did do that. Omega let me know when they're finished. The Parks and Recreation Committee approved the submitted dog park rules with one amendment, which was they had, at the Parks and Recreation Committee, there was a very good discussion around not allowing any drinks or food or drinks on the property. And then that was decided to just not have any food or drinks in the fenced area. So that was updated. Also, the Parks and Recreation Committee recommended a few wording changes with the school district language at Jefferson Park. But that's just the food and drink thing. The next meeting that they're having was on 9/15/23. So I don't know when the next meeting is, but, okay, it is composed of about five people. And if anybody is interested in bringing and developing the three dog parks that are proposed in Sheridan, it would be best to either email Omega here at City Hall or phone call Omega, and she'll get you connected.
Excellent. Jim?
Didn't we just put a brush job on getting the horseshoe pits good to go for one kind of day?
A different one.
Horse, the old horseshoe pits. That's on the west side, and so we have the new horseshoe pits. And then the west side where the old horseshoe pits are, is basically just a fenced area at this point. And so the idea is to use that as a dog park until we have enough money to buy more fencing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Lucy, now are you ready with your art report? Well, Heidi.
Yes.
Lucy. I was still a little apprehensive because I myself am not an artist, but I do appreciate art. And so we have meetings, and our next one will be on September 27th at 1:00. If anybody would like to come from the committee and see what we're trying to put together. And it's kind of tricky because actually the revitalization is doing a mural, organizing a mural setup that is ran by another committee. And what I've tried to do is bring ideas to the art committee because it doesn't just include murals, although murals is very touristy attraction, getting ideas for what those murals might look for versus just local artists and different things like that. Once again, just having a discussion like how to promote that within our communities, you know, Sheridan, Little Mind, and Grand Run, and support our local people. The one thing that I have come up personally from my building, because it's my building, is that I like the idea, if anybody ever goes to McMinnville, I've said it many times, I'll say it again tonight, is at Boersmann's, there's a very nice looking wool plaque. It's on the corner of Third and 99 West. And it's quaint fingers and arrows of what direction the, you know, the airport is, the fire station. And I thought I would volunteer my building if it had something to that, be statured on it. I like the colors. It's got gold and green and red, and then it has the arrows, or it has fingers pointing. I just really like the little fingers pointing also. And then to come up with different identifying areas that we would like to have people come into town to go, like, for example, the south side park, you know, maybe the RV park at the end, and, or, you know, just different ideas. And I'm getting a bid from the gentleman who actually did the one at Boersmann's because that way I know it will look like that. There was another lady at the revitalization who would like to kind of get involved with painting to some degree. I'm not sure what her degree is, but I have yet to get her bid that I will take this information to the revitalization because they have grants that they can help support if it falls within their criteria. So kind of like I'm a helper in some ways, but not if it were to be like glassblowing or pottery or people who paint, you know, things like that. And Liz Hodges herself, council person, Liz Hodges, she is really a very nice painter, but people, so she knows artists also. It's like bringing artists together, like Monica Stetzel, who actually through her art conspiracy, put the, on wooden boards in the pavilion that the students painted, which promotes our kids in the community and celebrates them. So it's about the celebration of our communities. And if anyone is interested, one of the ideas we came up, I think, at the last meeting, too, speaking of the museum, who's a wonderful resource for history of murals, and the Dallas have a, if you'd like to Google something, I'd have to Google Waldo's. And they have some really pretty fantastic murals. And there's a whole process for that. And Heidi was kind enough to send me a notice today about a partial grant. And, you know, you gather your information, and then you make these decisions. You listen to the painters, you see what they do. But also, we were thinking of finding a, an old barn like they have, I think it is in Carlton. There's an old barn with a quilt on it. I think it looks pretty, pretty great. So now everybody just starts counting for, I've already found one barn. I don't have two. But, and then you have to approach the property owner and, and, you know, you have to make a presentation. But I think coming into Sheridan or leaving Sheridan, that would be a pretty cool thing to see on the side of a barn. But there's a lot of work involved, but it's not just do it. There's a whole bunch of hard work involved in orchestrating these and also getting the funds to do them.
I want to add a couple of things to Lucy's group that they've been working on, too, is developing the city's logo.
I was wondering about that.
And city colors as well.
Okay, and that's good. We're just, we're just maybe in the discussion area there, too, also.
Yeah.
What time is the meeting on the 27th, 10?
1:00.
Is it here, Lucy?
Yes, it's at City Hall between 1:00 and 2:00 on 27.
It said 1:00 to 30.
Well, yeah, we're a little bit more easygoing at that meeting.
Is that open to the public, Lucy?
Yes, that's why I, I wanted you to know that because it's open to the public, yes.
Charlie LaRue, who was born and raised in the area, she's an amazing talent, and she's, she's recognized across the United States with her talent.
I think I've talked to after the meeting, regards to that. But thank you very much, and I do know Johnny LaRue. So thank you for that. Okay, all right. So you have any more on that, Lucy?
Thanks.
Okay, so any other council comments? Yes, Jim?
I foresee several things that I can't do anything about, but we can talk about here, that people on their lunch hour come to the city hall and get stuff done and can't get in. I wonder if we can do something about that, because a lot of people on their lunch hours come here and do the good.
That is something that Yvonne and I keep trying.
Anyone else want to comment on that?
Not on that.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, Danny, did you have something?
This is along the lines of Mr. Dealey there, the crosswalks, especially when, where he talks about, like, IGA, country markets. I've had, on several occasions, stop to let somebody across and people pass me on the right-hand side.
I know.
And I, a few years back, we used to have a stay-up.
Not on that.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, Danny, did you have something?
This is along the lines of Mr. Neely there, the crosswalks, especially when, where he talks about like IGAs, country markets. I've had, on several occasions, stopped to let somebody across and people pass me on the right-hand side.
I know.
And I, it's, a few years back, we used to have a stay operation. Every year, the cops would come and they would, I'll go walk across the street.
Those are called pedestrian awareness operations.
We really know what it's called.
So I, I don't know why we can't do that. Most all the small communities, I used to drive semi through all these towns, and they did her. They always had a sting for two or three days and it really helped. People started paying attention. And those crosswalks are not painted well again. And we better do something because people just speed through there. And again, you can't step off if I'm a big truck or something, a tall pickup. And you can get hit.
Yeah, so Heidi, at a prior meeting, did we talk about painting Broadway stripes across that crosswalk? And if it's, so is that on the waiting list?
I'll follow up with the Public Works Department to see what that is.
Like the road strip type thing?
Yeah, we had talked about that with Kai, and so I'll see where we are with that. Yeah.
That would be great. I hear a lot about that too. Jim?
I also thought that Kai had mentioned that we could add some yellow to that, so it would stand out even more.
And Lucy?
And, you know, there's also, a lot of people look at me, kind of give me the dirty look, but I just want to let you know that from Alex Automotive to the Rexall Drug or the DMC Fitness to the corner of my building, even though it's not marked, it is a crosswalk. And people need to get educated on crosswalks because they zoom right by there and might even yell at me. And I'm thinking, go read the ordinance, because it is a crosswalk. The reason it's not painted is because it is opted out to be a parking space in a much-needed parking for downtown. Maybe they could just put a little horizontal strip there, even though it doesn't have lines like slow your buns down. Because I hear people ripping through South Bridge Street and I'm thinking, and I could never get away with that. But they're just ripping those little mufflers off and stuff and just shooting by. And I'm thinking, I, I know what they're talking about. I do hear that, so.
That's part of the project that Kai was working on too, I think, was changing up the parking. Having some proposals, remember we had talked about the Sheridan one, where it was called the dry end?
Oh, I know, what else I was going to say is with the public being very aware, you know, all you've got to do is look up and get a driver's license number off a car too. When you see them doing something like do that, it just makes me angry. And, um, you know, if they can catch that license number, they can turn them into the police and, and it's helpful. Be very helpful.
Just so everybody knows, there was a change in the Oregon law that all corners are crosswalks.
Unless they're marked as a crosswalk closed.
That's true.
Mind the exception.
It's not the exception. All right, I am proud of you.
Is it work that way?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
On, on bridges, right now.
Okay. Well.
So then I'm hearing council concerns, Jim?
Yeah.
So did we ever find out about the lights on the bridge?
Which part of? The revitalization part, I think TK and I talked about that. And.
I think it's a group effort, isn't it?
Uh-huh. So that, yes, there, I would say the wheels are in motion. And one of the things is I still need to follow up with the county. We've had a couple of emails back and forth about the costly ones. So I think that TK, she's still in, TK and I will follow up tomorrow more about the lights and see where everybody's at. But yes, we do want to get those lights turned back on the bridge, especially it's starting to get darker earlier. They look really nice, but yeah, we had thought about adding a timer so that they close down or turn off for a certain amount of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that the revitalization has that, have that, well, I know that the revitalization had that on their last agenda. And TK and I got a chance to follow up. One more on that.
Okay, and Jim?
Were you able to get the bulbs to fix the plaza?
I believe that is a yes. I'm about ninety-seven percent. Okay, so yes, sir. All right, can I say one more thing? Okay, I don't want to cut anybody off. Okay, she says they're, they are working on it. Okay, so the news register with that report that they had, would the council like me, is the council in favor of me writing a letter to the editor to ask for the corrections?
Yes.
And I will work then with Mayor Mary Ann to make sure that we capture all the comments that we have for that. But I do have articles for you, or articles, I have photocopies for you to take home. So if you see something, um, well, Mary Ann and I'll send out an email perhaps with the, tomorrow, with the edits and our comments by tomorrow afternoon, I would imagine. And then, um, it'll be tomorrow late afternoon, by the way. So, and then we'll send that out and I'll be able to capture all those. We'll just do like a final check-in with you to make sure it gets everything, but I'll.
Do you need a motion from the council for that direction?
Okay, so it looks like everybody, you know, at least I know.
Okay, all right.
You have five, isn't it, it's not over yet, is it? No, that is not, that's the one that was done on Friday. So if everybody just wants to take this and you can mark it up on here.
Okay.
That's easier for you. Do you have Yvonne's copies? Lucy, you have to get certain.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to condense it.
Did you mark it up?
I'm just gonna.
I, I can take this moment, please? Go ahead.
I, I, I'm not sure if I should just talk to you after the meeting. It was about Frontier, um, you know, they gave a presentation a couple of months ago when they were talking about, you know, adding fiber. And they left a door hanger on my door, so I thought, oh, maybe there's fibers here. So I called them and they said their board had decided not to install, um, fiber in town. Um, so I'm not exactly sure why, I'd like to know why. They may have mentioned that the other internet company founded here had did one or something, which maybe they do, I just want to know more about that.
As a follow-up, so Kai and I, maybe Gary, Gary's here if anybody has any Public Works questions.
I agree.
Um, so we are working with Alurica now to try to get a deal negotiated or a franchise agreement negotiated with them that would allow for them to have, what is it called, Jim? Like a satellite dish essentially?
Yeah, it's a dish.
A dish up at the water plant. So we're working on that, but, yeah, we'll see where that goes. So, but councillor George and I have been trying to hustle around and find somebody to bring reliable broadband into Sheridan. So the county is also working on that and they have designated that Sheridan, or West Valley is a priority for them with their broadband money. So we're trying to support that effort. They were very impressed with how much work we had already put into it.
That's great.
Yeah.
Well, we did give, uh, Hunter Technology permission and Zoom. He said, oh yeah, we're really good and we'll help you out. And I'd also like to know why they also said, well, never mind. It's like, hey, you broke that.
We did break two, two, just to clarify, they, they do still provide internet here. The county is not going to be fiber.
Yeah, well, that's what he was promising, was high speed and low prices. It can get much better, yeah, so.
But you were talking about Frontier. Is that the same as, oh, you were talking about Hunter?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry.
But they, the meeting, we voted to give them a franchise. And then they said they were going to bring in fiber.
I even called them too to see if it was coming out my way. I needed additional for my cameras and, and they said, oh yeah, we'll get back to you.
Check in the mail.
Okay, is there any other council concerns? Yes, Danny?
I should have brought this earlier, but it's out on our water rights. But, uh, it says it reached a critical point. The water rights application was handed off to the Oregon Health Authority for consideration. Were we behind in our water rights applying?
Not really behind, but they needed to have somebody do the work. So that's why we had hired the council, we contracted with GSI to do that. And so GSI worked with the staff, gathered all the information, worked with our engineers, and was able to, and it was, that was quite a bit of work for Public Works and, and for me, um, to get to that point. So I'm really excited that we got to that point, but now it's in the state's hands and they have a backlog. So it'll be, it'll be wild and we're told we, we hear from them. But having those water rights is critical because we have to use them or show that we have the capacity and the need and the growth projected to use them.
So we have several different water rights, is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
And are they all up?
They all went through the paperwork process to make sure that they are all being documented. Well, I don't think we're documenting it, but they're all being, they're all being secured, let's say that.
But some of those expiration dates are further out than some of them. Also, they don't, they don't match necessarily, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. So all the ones that were in need of that have had the attention. And the other ones are on the radar of GSI. So we should not get, I mean, we're behind necessarily, but it was getting close.
So the, the old state terminology for that is if you don't use them, you lose them. So, and you've got to document it to the state normally in order for them to have a license.
You really.
Yeah.
And Rexi?
What is the term for those? I mean, are they all different or are they? Yes. Yeah, um, this was a lot of work that was done in, back in the day when the water, when the Stony Mountain reservoir, and I, at this point, I would have to look back at my reports to remember exactly which ones it, it is. But I do know that with, working with GSI, they were surprised at how many we had too. And those, you know, waters were more than gold. And right now, we have received, just so everybody knows, we've received notifications from the Oregon Health Authority that if you do not have a permit to use water for drinking water, for irrigation, for livestock, I mean irrigation, irrigation for crops or for livestock, then you, you have to cease using water out of the Yank Hill River right now. So the water is very low, well worth than it has been in people's memories. So just keep that in mind as we start to talk about, um, changes in the future and where we're gonna, where we're gonna get our water.
Our first meeting's going to be open to the public? How do we find out about going to these meetings? Those are really important meetings. I'm sorry, I am out of order.
But you know, that's okay. You could, and you have access to the web, the city's website via computer? Okay, so there always, was it on there?
On our agenda.
And then if you have any doubts, you can always call City Hall?
Yes.
And they will answer.
Water rights are really important when they're senior city people.
Okay, all right, and Danny?
I guess this just brings up, since our little episode with Stella Jones, and the springs are very low, and we had a big water leak. And if, and we lost the pump, it was out for over two weeks. So we're relying on the one pump. I think we really need to start looking at the Stony Mountain reservoir and figuring that all out because, uh, it's just been sitting there now for like nine years, ten years. And we're getting into a critical place with water. We have lots of water, we're just trying to get it. So I just think that we'd better start looking at that a little harder.
The staff agrees with you.
I think the council agrees with you and if we should, we should because we've got it. We're a hundred steps ahead of anyone else.
Yep.
We need to continue on the road to getting that water to not only us, but there are others that may need it to be good clean water.
Yes, Kay?
Uh, is Civil, Civil West, are they working on that, or that to let us know? Is that, is that part of the master plan?
Yes, no, that's my answer. So when, so the Water Master Plan will address that, which is due late winter.
And I have a feeling you're, you have something to tell us. Do you hear, did you show up?
No, I just moved, it sounds like I hear you better.
Oh, okay, okay.
Ah, you just stand up.
So for those of you who don't know, Gary is with the Public Works Department. He does a wonderful job, so, okay. All right, so anything else on that?
Oh, yes, I do. So this is for some of the folks, and I'm sorry if anybody left before I got to say this, in regards to homeless and people who, the positive side of helping, which, you know, I believe in helping people anyway. But this is through the Mission Yank Hill County Dog Co-Rescue Mission, which, by the way, I donate. They, they take clothing and they have a little list of things, everything from garlic supplies, dishwasher liquid, to trash bags, gallon trash bag that I one time said, oh, is that where they put their clothes in? And they said, no, in the winter when it's really cold, they use it to keep themselves warm. Because there's nowhere to stay when all the shelters are filled up. So they give them garbage sacks to go lay somewhere and try to keep warm, which I think is really sad. But on the note of being positive, um, I don't know, maybe Yvonne, if somebody wanted to actually read this, this is very encouraging tool to helping others. And they have, this is an example of what helping people can be like. This woman's name is Jennifer and she's having a hard time finding a job. This time went by, she finally found a job driving for the carnival after searching for a long time. She ended up leaving that job because in her compromising and dangerous environment, she realized she had to keep looking. When she chose to leave that job for her own safety, she knew she'd be homeless. She remembered seeing a dude at the Yank Hill County Fair representing the mission. She spoke to the people there and was asked for a place to stay. They encouraged her to go to the mission and she'd be able to get a temporary bed. Jennifer decided to take him up on that and spent the night at the mission. After realizing it was a safe place with a great staff, she stayed on as a regular guest. She was truly grateful to be there and she knew the Lord was blessing her with a place to stay. And she came into the mission, she was broken and separated from her beautiful kids and would pray that the Lord could restore that relationship. It was very hard on her, but she saw that she had a lot of help from staff and other resources to move forward. And it talks about after a period of time, she was able to get a job as a seamstress. And then at the timeframe, she was reunited with her kids, she was filled with joy. She progressively got better and better. And now she lives in another place with her children and is married. And she's very grateful for the mission to give her an opportunity to try to find a place. That is the positiveness of helping people. There's always going to be people who don't want help just because they're in such a bad rut. But there's people like Jennifer that could be out there that are just looking for a break to have somebody help them. And I'm not saying anything about housing in Sheridan, that temporary resources mean that we could help her find a place like the mission. It also shows on here a future program house that has ten rooms in it. And, you know, obviously, it's not in Sheridan, it's in McMinnville. But it's a ten-room, one to two, uh, your faith-based life skills job training. And yes, they do profess God, and I don't think there's anything wrong with putting limits because you know what, people who feel that way go there for a chance and they're grateful to Him. So this is the positive news that can come from resourcing and helping others so that they can have a productive and healthy life with their families. But it is a long trip out of having nothing. If you know what rents cost, even for a one-bedroom apartment can be eight hundred dollars. And when you're working at a grocery store and getting minimum wage, do the math and figure it out. And people would rather try to live in their car or live somewhere. Not everybody, but there's a lot of people who are just looking for a break.
Okay, thanks, Lucy. All right, and if there's nothing else, could I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn? Second.
All in favor?
I will say, amen.
All right, we need to adjourn. Thank you, and thank you all for coming tonight, I appreciate it.
And for state.
And for state, I grew to the end of state. And on Lucy's note, sock drive is happening.
Oh, that's great.
And hats, Public Works, there are boxes out there, but City Hall's box is out there. And the library, we said, they have to have their, we're not beating the library, they have their own box.
You should, it's a staff competi, it's a competition. Or did you say sock drive?
Yes. Sock, and we're do, and we're also collecting hats that you're.
On socks and hats, okay.
Socks and hats, and there's a competition that goes on between City Hall, the library, and Public Works. And last year, library beat our socks off.
Like twice, like twice, right?
Yeah. So they want, everybody wants to contribute. So these ladies decided not to have a box here for the donation.
We're talking library, they're on their own.
It's getting pretty competitive.
It's getting pretty competitive.
I'm trying to make this even keener than I wanted it to be. Thank you so much, Paulson.
I have a comment, I didn't mention it on, she goes, might want to try it to the Verona.
Yeah, that's a perfect, I would have waited for that.
Right, that's... Because I went to places and my child could, uh, uh, come get dressed on my way. Thank you. And I would work.
Heidi, Heidi, it's not what they should maybe sound like, so you...
There's some stuffy, I'm...
Hope for nature. Thank you, Joseph. Thank you. You know, I'm collecting your little paper clips, I have another, maybe.
This clip?
I can get it to ship. So, well, no matter how, I'm going to write, in fact, did you say that the lights were changed at the plane, or I'm going to...
Okay, so my hoochim, where's my hoochim?
I don't know. Last time he was running by Omega, I don't know where he was.
I don't know where he was now. What, I guess it's in my socks. Oh, he's trying to listen through.
That was hilarious.
I know.
Can he hit himself?
He's actually getting that over.
Oh, yeah, for this. Yeah, he was kind of always like this. And he was like, what is it called for those knockdown wrecking balls? Like wrecking ball, from all of his books. No, yeah. Good job, Gary.